Hey, Ryan Jackson. Welcome to the Donnie B Show. We're on the mega locally platform. You know what that stands for?
Um, I'm assuming. Making America great at the local level.
That's right. We that and that's the purpose behind this broadcast. That's why I reached out to you and I heard you were running for city council. I was so excited because I I remember seeing you many times in front of the podium down there at the city council. Uh, telling them exactly what you thought, you know?
Yeah.
So I want to thank you for taking your time to come, come on the show today, and I want to thank our audience. Uh, for, for tuning in and listening. I hope that maybe, uh, we can bring up a few things of discussion that the citizens should be aware of, or maybe they already are and they're looking for somebody like you to maybe make a difference.
Yeah.
Shall we get started?
Yeah, let's do it.
You know, before we dive into it, there's really five main topics that I'd like to go over. One is your political affiliation, Republican or Democrat. And I know, I know, everybody says, well, it's city governments. You represent all the people, and this is true. But sometimes, depending on your party, party's affiliation, you perceive things through a lens of your affiliation. And no matter how much we try not to be biased, uh, sometimes we just can't help. But so I'd like to talk into that. I'd also like to talk about how you make decisions because now you're in a leadership position, uh, with the city. I know you've been in other leadership positions. But specifically with the city, you know, when something comes across you, what, how you have to vote? Yes, no. You know, I'd like to kind of understand those weighted variables on how you make decisions. And then the third thing, uh, kind of what's your number one focus for Joplin? Uh, what would you like to, you know, try to, to, to help Joplin citizens achieve? And then communication and transparency. And then there's something that was very interesting in the last city council meeting. Uh, city council member Stinnett. Basically said that he had been researching Springfield, Missouri's, uh, ways of doing business with their city council and realized that they had only done three emergency orders. In the entire year last year, and, and I've been watching the city councils, uh, meetings in Joplin, and they do like three every meeting. Uh, so I'd like to touch on that, kind of your thoughts behind that a little bit. So, all right, I've talked enough. Tell me a little bit about yourself. Tell the audience who you are and why you're running for city council.
Yep. So my name's Ryan Jackson. Um, I'm a lifelong resident of Joplin. My family, um, has roots here in Joplin, all the way back to the early 1900s. They, my great grandparents came here, um, not long after immigrating into the country from Germany and moved their way, you know, from Ellis Island to St. Louis and then on into Joplin, Missouri. And we've.
Sprachinseldeutsch?
I do not.
Manned Deutsch is nix gut, nix gut.
But no, uh.
No, sorry, you're up.
No, it's fine. And my family's just had, you know, longstanding, you know, um, heritage here in Joplin. And, you know, this is where I decided to live after I moved back from college. Uh, I've got my immediate family here, my sister, her kids, my mother, you know, I wanted to be a good, safe community that, you know, we all enjoy. Um, Joplin is for everybody. It's not just for, um, the widows. It's not just for, for the families of four, you know, we have single moms in this community. We have, um, people who've come here from other countries, just like my great grandparents did. We need to make Joplin a community that is well-rounded, but balances life and keeps everybody, you know, appeased and safe at the same time. Um, I'm largely very conservative. I used to say I was more moderate, but you know, I think the last few years, um, we're not allowed to be in the middle anymore. I feel like I've been pushed more to the right, and that's fine. I, you know, I've, I've identified as Republican, you know, for a number of years. But with, uh, with the, the climate of Joplin, you know, we don't, we're not supposed to declare a party for, you know, city council elections, but I don't mind telling people, you know, who I am and what I'm about. And I, I think that's important to say, you know, um, I'm the red dot, not the blue dot. So.
Right.
You know?
It is what it is. The reason I, the reason I asked that is because I went to a coffee or a, like a town hall down at the Joplin greenhouse. And I think one of the city council or one of the constituents was asking the, the city council members, it's like, we have a right to know what your political affiliation is.
Yeah.
Because if you're asking us to vote, we just want honest answers, whether you're Republican, Democrat, Libertarian, you know, whatever. But, uh, and he was just puzzled why none of that information was readily available to the constituents. So I thought, you know, what I'm going to ask these city council members or candidates, uh, what their affiliation is. That way it gives the people kind of an understanding of your, of your values and which way you're heading, your trajectory. Um, so the second thing I want to talk about is decision-making, right? Uh, you know, as a leader, that's especially at the position you're at, that's all you're going to be doing. You're going to be making decisions on whether to increase the taxes, whether to, to not increase the taxes, you know, you, you got a multitude, whether part of your money is going to have to be taken from or not allocated to one department, but another one and establishing those priorities. So, you know, I, I know it's not an easy job and it's definitely not a, a high paying job because how much do you guys make for being a city council member?
I think they get five bucks a meeting. So.
Five dollars a meeting. So you're not doing it. You're not doing it for the money. So your heart must be in the right place. Um, so can you tell me just a little bit about your decision-making?
So, um, you know, I've been on a lot of city boards and right now, like planning and zoning, for example, that's something that really impacts a lot of neighborhoods and residents very directly. Because if I live in a single family R1 residential area and someone says, well, I bought this lot and I decided I want to make a duplex, they got to go to planning and zoning and then city council to have that process changed. And a lot of what I look at in the decision-making process is, you know, well, how, how do the people who are directly affected by this feel? You know, yes, you may be the property owner and you have a right to develop your property and do something with it. But you also bought your property knowing what it was and what the use of that part of the community is. So it's going to have a, you know, your neighbors, they knew that's what it was zone. They knew that's what was around them. It may have not been developed, but they knew that empty lot across the street was the same zoning as they were. So I think it's important to take in those people's opinions and their concerns very strongly in what you make your decision based on. It's not saying you can't develop your lot, but it's to say, you know, you bought it with this, you knew your neighbors were all this. Now the neighbors are like, hey, you know, we're good with that. You know, I, I can swallow that pill a lot more easily, but I want to be very conscientious of what, you know, the people who are most directly affected because it may not be next door to me. It may not impact me on a daily basis, but I'm not the person who bought a home across the street who made that investment there. So I want to know what citizens are concerned about, what their, um, you know, expectations are. It's not to say I'm always going to go that way. I mean, there's been times I, I voted on things that I can tell someone wasn't the happiest about, but you know, when you look at, you also have to look at like, what's the long-term vision for this property or the long-term vision of this part of town or whatever's going on? You have to factor in all these different things and you know, as. The first, most important part.
You know, as you're talking about this, something comes to mind, you know, if you look down there at the water gardens property, right? Where you have the candy house and you have the chamber of commerce. Uh, obviously it's a business. It's zone, you know, it's commercial area right there. But you know, I even, you know, I, I even served, me and my boys, we went there on New Year's or Christmas Eve this year and we served and, you know, I, I've met multiple times with, uh, Travis from the water gardens to understand. But as you're talking about properties, it kind of keyed in my mind because I've also talked to other businesses in the community that are directly across from, let's say, Soul's Harbor, water gardens. I mean, and now you're having nuisances of, uh, basically individuals that are under the influence. Hey, they're victims of drug addiction or they're victims of mental illness. We have compassion. Our heart goes out for these type of people. They need help. I've had, you know, I've had family and close friends that's been touched by both of those. And so I, you know, we can't say, oh, we've got to move this out of town. But these are decisions that somebody in your position soon to be is going to have to start making when, in dealing with this homelessness situation and the panhandling and not only that, but the roam, the people that are roaming our streets. When I say, because everybody wants to lump everybody into homeless. So when we talk about roaming the streets, I went out and just drove at just after dark and I saw adult males. Uh, obviously under the influence, riding kids bicycles, carrying baseball bats, like kid-sized baseball bats, and they're all hooded up. You can tell they're not up to any good. And it wasn't just one or two. This was in with a 30-minute period. I saw eight to 10 all around the main street down there. So you know, you've got some important decisions that's going to be on your plate. Once you get there on city council, because I know they're doing a, uh, you know, they're under this assessment for helping the homeless. And I just, I hope that as we look to help the homeless, we look to help the citizens as well. And so back to the property issue is I've had people say, well, this is a nuisance. I'm finding drugs. I'm finding needles. Uh, people are, you know, actually going to the bathroom in our front of our property.
Yeah.
Uh, so, you know, those are things that's, that's coming up on your plate and, uh, you know, maybe when you get on there, you can make a change.
Well, what I would say, first of all, is when those things happen on other business owners' properties or in front of their properties, you know, our city does have processes of, you know, citing for trespass and loitering and things that can be done. And I get it. A lot of businesses don't want to have to pull that string and say, I'm the bad guy saying you don't have a right to be out here. But you know, at the same time, as a business owner, you also owe it to yours, the people you're providing a service for to keep them safe and make them feel safe coming into your brick and mortar structure. You know, you have an investment you need to protect as a business owner. You have an investment you need to protect for your employees who are getting a paycheck there day to day. So it's not to say people don't have a right to be on the street, walking by, standing there. There's a difference in hanging out and being there and loitering and trespass and being a nuisance whenever, you know, there's defecation or whatever going on. Or, you know, whatever is causing the problem. What I would say council and city staff need to do is be supportive of those businesses because unfortunately the business owner is going to have to sign some kind of thing for trespass or loitering or whatever with the police department, with the prosecutor's office. And from my understanding, that's, that's often where the enforcement kind of falls off the table. And that's really unfortunate. And I get it. Nobody wants to be the bad guy. But what I say as a city official, if I was, when I'm in that capacity is you're not being a bad guy. You are doing what you can to keep your employees safe, your customers safe, yourself safe. You know, you can talk to different business owners downtown and I guarantee you, there are some very scary situations. Many of them have all fallen into. Um, you bring up Soul's Harbor. I'll tell you what, those are some of the nicest folks that run that organization. They have been a longstanding community partner. And I know if they are ever privy of any information of any of the people who are staying in their facility, doing anything of ill conduct, they are on them like no other. And, and I respect that because they want to be a good partner and they also want to rehabilitate. They aren't looking to, well, you came here for lunch. Now we're kicking you out until dinner. And then you're here for dinner, you know, go to bed and we're done with you. And then in the morning we'll kick you out again. Soul's Harbor is looking at, you know, pathways that they help, you know, people who are in that situation. And like I said, if they're aware of something that happens of an ill conduct, they're going to, you know, get on it and they're going to be very proactive to fix the situation. Not just for the community, but also for, for the people they're trying to provide a service for. And, and I think that's be an expectation with a lot of these facilities. Um, right. But you know, at the same time, it's one of those things when you, you know, if you're going to open a new business, you got to be aware of what's around you. Um, and, and that can be tough, but you know, I think that's also where the city needs to be a little more, um, planned in what we do with some of the zoning and the practices of what's allowed to go in places.
Very good points. And I, you're right about the people at Soul's Harbor. I know them. I used, you know, I went to church with them. Actually, I saw them just before Christmas and they invited me because I did a 90-day study of Joplin specifically of the panhandling zones, uh, of the homelessness and of the people that are roaming our streets. I wanted to see who, who is actually roaming our streets. I see lots of mentally ill. I see lots of, uh, drug addicted that are so high. They didn't even see me as they crossed the intersection. They were just stumbling across the street. You know, we've had two fatalities in Joplin. Uh, from vehicle motorists hitting pedestrians and you know, one, you know, I don't know all the details because there's no transparency in a lot of this information that takes place. Uh, and that takes me to another, another part is, you know, when you start like talking about decision-making, some weighted variables that I always used to like to put in place. What I decide is it going to make the people more free or less free? Is it going to provide more transparency or less transparency to the situation? So is it less taxes or more taxes? So I think as you, as we plan our trajectory of our vision and our setting our compass, you know, north. So when you have those difficult decisions, you've already had those variables lined out. And when it's really difficult, you can look back and say, hmm, did it make it, did it make the citizen more free or less free? So like coming back to the COVID, I'd like to address that. That's part of the decision process. So obviously there was a, you know, COVID-19, everybody knows about COVID-19, but the city chose to mandate masks. Right? Um, and I had a problem with that. And that's really one of the reasons I got actually involved much more with the city, uh, leadership and trying to hold our city council, uh, a little bit of oversight and engage and see what's going on because of that one issue right there. I thought that was completely out of line for them to mandate because like you said, small businesses, that could put businesses out of business. We've always quarantined the sick. We've never quarantined the healthy. And to require those masks, I just thought was out of line. What's your thoughts on that?
Well, it, it's, it's very deep and I don't think as a city official, I have the right to tell anybody how to run their business or what they should make their customers do. Um, as long as you're not impeding with, you know, if you're not doing something that's going to put someone in harm's way, who am I to say, you can't do this? Now, if we're, if we're talking about, you know, children getting invited into, you know, a 21 and up establishment and, you know, adult things going on, that's a little different, but we're talking just in everyday business, you know? And, you know, actually I'll give you a great example. One business, after the city said, oh, post shutdown, well, now we'll let things open up, but they gave categories of what could open up. And one of those categories exempted was bars. Well, I know the lady who owns Frank's Lounge, Miss Judy, in fact, you know, one thing she's very proud of, not only being one of the first people to rebuild her business after the tornado flattened it. Um, she is one of the old, actually the oldest Budweiser tap in town. That's one thing Miss Judy loves to brag about. But she's, she's been a longstanding, you know, community business and partner. And she runs a great establishment. Um, she's a very kind woman. She, you know, pays her taxes and, you know, she provides a service for, you know, whoever wants to go to a drinking establishment. That's great. But the city said, oh no, everything else can open up, but the bars. So if you had a restaurant serving alcohol, that's great. People that sit in there all day long and sit and drink. But if you had a bar with no food, you can't.
Right.
Who are you to tell this woman, she doesn't have a right to earn a paycheck for herself or her employees, that she can't make income to pay her utilities and her taxes? That is not the right of a city council member at all. That is vastly overstepping.
So I'm glad, I'm glad to hear you have that opinion because I agree with that one.
Yeah. I mean, telling a business that is grossly inappropriate. But even to tell them, you know, and by the way, you got to make sure all your, you know, guests wear masks. Uh, that's not appropriate. You know?
Right.
Honestly, I felt it was kind of a safety hazard. If you think about it, when you, you know, if everyone's wearing a ball cap and a face mask, I guess you could go rob any store and what did the guy look like? Well, I don't know. He had a face mask on, you know?
And we saw a lot of that.
Dude, I watched enough movies to know that, that's the bank robbers, but you know, we made everybody.
And there's still people today wearing the mask and that are robbing places, you know? So, but I mean, it's a valid point right there.
But to me.
One thing.
COVID or not, if you're sick, stay home. Get better, you know? Someone else can surely go pick up your medicine or something. If you got to go out, I get it. I understand. But I, when I see people in masks today, I just think to myself like, well, if you're sick, you need to stay home. If you're not sick, you're going to make yourself sick by breathing in your own exhaust. Would you stop this nonsense? I mean, I saw a lady walk out of a store the other day with a baby, an infant, and she and her infant both were in masks. I mean, it, it was, it just made my guts sick. Don't do that to a child.
You know, since we're on this subject of masking and COVID, I'm going to play a clip. Uh, so if you bear with me, Kaden, can you queue up, queue up that clip for that up?
Neighbors, this is Anthony Molyon, one of your Joplin city counselors, and tonight I'm reaching out to you with a very important message. Please stay home. Now, as I'm recording this on a Friday night, there is no stay-at-home ordinance in effect in Joplin. So what I am saying does not carry any force of law, but I am asking you, please stay home. If your job allows you to work from home, do it. To the greatest extent possible, avoid public places. Keep your children close. Now is not the time for neighborhood barbecues or even board game nights with friends. Skip attending worship services. Do it as a family at home. I don't want to alarm you, but we do need to take care and be vigilant. Right now in Joplin, there is an unseen enemy that wants to kill us. It doesn't care if we're young or old, rich or poor, and it has succeeded at infecting person after person in city after city and nation after nation. And everywhere it goes, it brings death with it. Right now, we only have one weapon to fight this virus with. Distance. To give everyone in Joplin the best chance at not getting sick, we have to stay away from each other. To keep everyone alive, we have to stay home. We can conquer this together as long as we stay apart. Be courageous, be wise. Thank you for doing your part to keep us all alive and healthy.
Okay. So I brought that up because as a decision-maker, you have to provide facts, transparency, discernment, communication. But when you play on people's emotions and try to use fear as the main method of a be changed, you know, trying to change someone's behavior. I just found this video out of line and not appropriate as a city council member to isolate people from their religion, from their family. I mean, I just, what's your thoughts on that?
You know, I think those sorts of decisions should be left to the individual. If they feel like they need to stay home, then they can stay home. Honestly, I think any city council member who is proposing that stay-at-home ordinance, they should all have been censored. Uh, that's, it's an option of the city council. It's nothing more than just a reprimand slap on the wrist, saying, you know, what you did wasn't right and going out and stepping out, putting out that video on, you know, basically you're saying, I'm on behalf of the city council. I'm a city councilman and this is what I'm telling you to do. It's not official, but this is Councilman Molyon telling you this. Absolutely inappropriate. And he should have been censored. And if any of the rest of them put something out like that before it was an official thing of the council, they should have been. But even at that, I think if, just in general, for doing that, I think it was a gross overstep. Just because you had the votes to do it at the time, doesn't make it right. And as far as I'm concerned, it was just negligence. Let people make their own decisions. If, you know, I, I live with my, um, my mother lives with me. She has situations that make her being compromised. Underlying health conditions, something like COVID would potentially be, you know, fatal to her. I was cautious and did whatever I could do to mitigate that risk. You know, I'd be the one to go buy groceries, make her stay in as much as possible, do her errands. Guess what? I came down with COVID.
Right.
Literally the day before I got sick, I was cooking dinner for my entire family. My sister and her kids were over here having dinner with us. Somehow, nobody else in the family but myself got it. Thankfully. What I had wasn't really bad. It was just kind of a, you know, two-week bug.
Right.
But.
Same as me.
You know, you you just have to, I knew the risk of, you know, going anywhere, I can catch a cold, I can catch a flu, I can catch COVID. There's a lot of things I can catch. It is what it is. You still have to live. You still have to go to the store. You still have to connect business. You still have to make a paycheck for yourself. Telling people that they don't have the right to go do that, that's just huge overreach. You know, at the time, the president, at the time, our governor, both those people said, hey, these are decisions to make at the local level. But what I think that means is that's up for every resident to decide what they want to do, not for your local government officials to put the thumb on them and say, this is what you're going to do.
Exactly. Well, good. I, I think we're in agreement on that topic as well. So I want to shift into communication and transparency. So those come hand in hand. And I want the city council and our city leadership to excel. I want them to be in good communication with the citizens. And I want them, I want there to be a, I want the citizens to have faith in our city council and our leadership. What I've seen is a wedge in multiple different directions, whether it's the bringing in of diversity, equity, inclusion, uh, whether, you know, the, the mask mandates. But a lot of that can be overcome by the communication. For example, there was a pedestrian ordinance that was passed in August of 2023. And it was designed to protect a pedestrian and the motorists. Uh, we have lots of panhandlers on our streets. We have lots of, like I said, drug addicted, mentally ill that are roaming our streets. And we've had two fatalities within the last, I think, what, six months, maybe?
There's been at least three in the last six months because I want to say one happened early December. But I mean, we've had.
Okay. I think you're right.
30 days.
But I, my question is, have you heard anything from the city putting out that there is a pedestrian safety ordinance? And this is how it's going to be enforced, that, uh, any individual cannot stand on the corner or an intersection or a busy highway that's over 35 miles an hour. I read the ordinance. I haven't heard anything that's come out from the city. I even asked a police officer, what can we do because this is dangerous? And he said, well, there's nothing we can do about it. So obviously that ordinance didn't make it down to the patrolman who's on the street. And it's not getting out via social media. Uh, via, you know, the news. Because nobody knows about it, but yet we had these fatalities. Don't you think after three fatalities, the city would want to come to the plate and say, we have enacted an ordinance for today to protect pedestrians? I haven't heard anything. Have you?
No, I haven't really, other than just, I know it's in place. Um, they don't really make it readily accessible to like, as they communicate those things. It, it's problematic because from my understanding, the police department was told when it first came into play, you go out and cite warnings. Well, first of all, their call volume, they're incredibly busy. They don't have time to be stopping to say, hey, you can't be standing out here doing this. There's now a new city ordinance against it. But the other problem with that was with just doing verbal warnings only, the next, same guy might get caught doing it later. Well, I never knew about that. They had no way they were tracking this. You know?
Right.
To know whether someone was, you know, intentionally defying it either. And that's, that's a big misstep in that because, you know, they might say, okay, well, you told me I can't do it here. I'm just going to go down the street. I'll go to another intersection, do this over here. Maybe it's a totally different officer who catches them. You know, there's no, there was no accounting of it. Um, that, that was one problem with it. I think another problem with it was, or with how things like this work. I mean, there's a newsletter that goes out. Well, what other communication is coming out from, you know, our information office within city hall? Besides that, and that, you know, one or two Facebook posts a day, you know, if there's someone working full-time.
And they're usually about this Girl Scout selling cookies. It's really nothing of substance because I've looked on the newsletter, there's, it's about having a coffee here. There's, there's nothing of substance that comes out, seems like from the city on vital issues like pedestrian safety, panhandling, mentally ill, roaming our streets. I'd like to hear something from somebody.
Yeah. Supposedly they're making a new communications department within the city, but it's like, you already have someone who's handling communications. But why is there not more of a volume of this coming out and how it's directed out and flowing out? I mean, you can't tell me that, you know, giving the weekly or the, every other week updated at a council meeting, putting together a newsletter and making Facebook posts is 40 hours worth of work. And handling whatever press release may have to come out from, you know, various departments, which most departments like the police department probably has the most, they handle their own press releases. So you know, be more proactive. And if we've got someone who's working in, you know, public information, let's get that public information out there. Because obviously the council said this is important enough that we need to pass this and this needs to move. What's the communication plan? So while you have some city staff who may be working on implementing the ordinance and the information needed for the ordinance and the enforcement of the ordinance, who's working on the communication of this ordinance?
Internal and external because, you know, when I was in the military, you know, I, I was a captain and had, I had about 274 guys. So there's a, a number of people that we had to, uh, that we were accountable for. But we had what we called was green tab. Green tab memos. And literally those were internal messages to everybody within my chain of command that if there were facts, uh, and I, and we, every Friday, you know, we would do how many people were injured or how, what was causing it, I, new IDs that were taking place. Uh, this was the method of operation from the, from the enemy. So we educated internally with facts and data. And that way, when someone asked them about it, we all had the truth. We all had the facts and the data and we could speak as one voice because we knew the, the, the entirety of the situation and we knew the data. So, and we called those green tab memos because literally they're talking points. Um, so when a police officer gets engaged by somebody by me and I say, well, how's the pedestrian safety ordinance? And he goes, well, I've never even heard of it. So that means from the city council and it went over to the police chief and it went down to the chain of command, down to the patrol officer, he had no clue what was going on. So there's no system in place for that internal messaging and that turn, internal communication and collaboration. That, that's, that's what I've been looking at. I think that's why there's a disconnect between the citizens and the city counts and the city in general and the administration. Because there's, when you have poor communication, rumors, misinformation, all that kind of stuff starts filling it. And now you've got angry people and it might not even be off the correct information.
Yeah. And it's. Yeah. And, and the thing is, I, I don't think you can just hang it all on the chief's shoulders if it's their job to tell all their patrolmen this. We have other people in the city who worked on this ordinance and got it put together. So when you're having, you know, whether it be a squadron meeting or a, you know, training session, you know, be there, be present and explain to the men and women in service who are protecting our community, what this is, how it works. Let them ask you questions and be available for them. Don't just put an email in their
Okay.
You know, box or note in their, you know, whatever.
Oh yeah, exactly. Ask for a brief back. Come to me. Tell me that you understand what I've just, you know, I've submitted. So let's, let's talk about reactive policing and proactive policing. We have a brand new police chief. I'm, I'm excited. I heard he's well qualified. Uh, people that's talked to him said, he seems to be a great guy. And so when I look again, it goes back to communication and transparency. When I look on Joplin's website and I try to find crime data for Joplin, there's a roll up of twenty twenty-three data. And I'll be honest with you, about eight months ago, I kept emailing the police department and the city. I said, why can I not get a crime map by date, time and location? So I can see trends that are happening around me and inside Joplin. And back then it was only updated to two thousand and nineteen. And this was just about eight months ago. And I think they thought, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer his email and I'm gonna update it to two thousand and I think it's twenty-two right now or twenty-one or something like that. But it's still, it was just a roll up. It showed you how many uh, car thefts we had all year. And so that data does nothing for the average citizen who's trying to have situational awareness. So if you look at Springfield's website, they have a crime map. I can log on there right now and, and look within a three mile radius of my home. And I can see everything that was entered in by a police officer into his computer system. It populates that map once the arrest was made or the activity occurred. So that's transparency that the citizens are looking for. When you start giving us a roll up numbers and we have to, we have to dig, beg, borrow, uh, email nine, ten times, and you still don't get anything, you get a roll up from two thousand and sixteen, that looks like you're trying to hide something.
Yeah. And, and I know the police department's doing some communication and system upgrades and I'm hopeful that might be something that will be included in this. I'm kind of worried it may not because I've kind of heard some problems they're having with the system and the contractor they selected for it rather than, you know, kind of going with a established company. But, um, I, I think what would be important with that is, you know, if you've had a series of break-ins in a neighborhood, you know, people can be aware of, okay, our neighborhood's pretty hot spot for these Cadillac converter thefts or, you know, there's been a lot of break-ins that have happened in our neighborhood. So what other steps can I take to, you know, be more proactive to try to be, have deterrence, you know? Residents need to be able to kind of know what's going on around them. Um, not kind of, no, they need to know.
Right.
Um, and so a data map like Springfield would be very valuable to any community, especially Joplin. And I think it would also help the police and something like that because if you're able to make yourself, you know, not be such a soft target, you're deterring crime, that's one less incident for them to respond to. That's one less case assigned detective. That's one less, you know, call a patrolman's going to have to go on or someone has to go fill out a report. Um, it, it, you know, I, I
That's called proactive policing.
It's, it could be a win-win for a lot of
You know, absolutely. And one thing on, you know, I want to make it clear, I was not blaming the police department because they get what the city council authorizes in funding. And everything has to be approved. And at one time we had that capability years ago. We used to have it and somehow it disappeared. And that's why people started looking at it. They're like, man, they're hiding the city council and the cities, they're hiding the, the crime data from us. But in reality, they just made a bad decision, bought the wrong, uh, software that doesn't connect. And the, the company went bankrupt and, you know, now the citizens are suffering because somebody made a bad decision.
Yeah. And, and that's one of the things. I think it's just one of those, again, it's a bit of a situational awareness thing. You know, be aware of the product you're buying, be aware of the supplier who's bringing it to you. Because I, I guarantee you a lot of police officers, you know, and people have been in the profession for a long time would say reasons why that person would be valuable or needed. And, um, you know, it's one of those tools that's just been taken out of their hands because we became more worried about, oh, that seems kind of pricey for this system. And, you know, this, this is a little bit cheaper. You know, well, we really could use more money over here and, you know, in this direction for that, but it's a valuable tool. So, you know, that'd be something that, you know, when it comes to, you know, budgeting time, you know, looking at, you know, what are the proper needs that would, you know, not just provide, you know, protection on the streets with more officers and the resources they need. This is another resource I think that they could use and, you know, have a discussion about that, about, you know, what tools do you need besides just, you know, your everyday, you know, equipment on your belt? And that's, so
Exactly.
I, I feel like, you know, between serving on other things in the city in the past, knowing a lot of people in, you know, our local law enforcement community, um, and even serving on, you know, things that helped our job and police department in the past, like our public safety funding committee years ago with, uh, you know, Councilman Cortez, that's actually how he and I got to know one other great guy. I think those things, those experiences kind of give me an idea of things, you know, we can talk about and ask about. You know, and, you know, if citizens are concerned or wanting to see the things, you know, I want them to bring that to me. I want people to, you know, bring their voice to the table. Let's, let's make sure we know what things we need to look out for.
You know, um, Ryan, I, I emailed this, the mayor a couple of times and I wanted to communicate with him. He never responded. I wrote a second letter. He never responded. So I, I mean, I wrote the entire city council member. So what I'm hoping is, is once you get onto the council seat, that you can help open up that dialogue and that communication with the citizens.
Yeah.
And because I want to close the gap between the, the leaders and the people. Because if we don't close the gap, we're always going to be at odds and we're not going to be able to accomplish the things that we need to do. We need unity. But we need good leadership that listens to the people and also will engage them and answer their questions. So maybe after you get elected, maybe you'd be willing to come back on, maybe some regular, uh, broadcast to even talk about, because a lot of times we work, like I had, I couldn't come to the city council meetings because I take my kids to basketball practice, right?
Yeah.
And then you get on to listen to it and it's a long video, right? So, you know, so, but it'd be great to be able to hit some highlights and some of the contracts that's been passed and why they've been passed. You know, some of the visions, uh, some of the execution issues you're having. So hopefully as you get elected, maybe we can set up something on a more regular basis and you can communicate with your constituents in in zone three and throughout the entire city.
Yeah. And, and, and you bring up a good point. It's not just zone three, it's the entire city because, you know, let's say I did have an opponent in this election. Let's hypothetically say that happens. Let's hypothetically say I get more votes out of zone three than I do citywide, but those citywide votes outnumber those zone three votes. It goes, the simple majority decides the candidate.
Right.
So, you know, even though I have a segment of the community that, you know, is my zone, I am here to represent, be responsible for. At large, the citizens elect me. It's not just the zone three residents that get to decide whether I'm on the ballot, whether they vote yes or no for me. Everybody's citywide because the decision that all nine council members make will impact all fifty thousand plus residents of this community.
Absolutely. You know, I don't want to keep you. I know you're busy. I've got one, one last talk, uh, topic. And then you can, if you have something you want to really convey to your constituents. The last one was the emergency orders. Uh, and I watched the city council, uh, clip from this Monday, actually. And council member Stinnett stood up or he didn't stand up, but he sat there and he basically said, he is investigating why we're doing so many emergency orders to pass some of these things that are coming through for a vote. He watched, he, he, he researched the Springfield, uh, city council. They only passed three emergency orders in the entire year. And Joplin passes like three almost every meeting. Everything's an emergency order. And I know there's some consequences because once it's passed as an emergency order, the people cannot come back and have it changed or, uh, is that correct?
I, I believe that's accurate. And from my understanding, and those emergency orders can be, you know, motioned and you can get a second. If you've got the majority of the votes, you can move them on to ordinance's first reading, et cetera. And that's where I think a lot of them need to be. Cause what my question would have been Monday night, you know, first reading the agenda and seeing the thing about the, uh, the water line being replaced with the justice center. I thought, okay, we've had this huge cold snap, something bad must have happened. Wow. Absolutely.
It's an emergency. It's right.
And, and that, you know, honestly, I think that was probably one of the lower threshold emergency ordinances I've seen in a while of like, you know, half a million dollars. You know, I've seen some of them be pretty sizable. But then as they start getting into this, well, it's a grant. So the city's only out two hundred and fifty thousand and the federal government pays the other two fifty. It's through the ARPA, blah, blah, blah. Okay. Well, we can make this, we have until December thirty-first to make this decision. Before we ever got to that point, once I would find out that, you know, no, this was not like, you know, the water line busted. It's just a thing we want to do to upgrade the building. Let's hit the brakes. Please define to me, what's an emergency to you? Whoever put this agenda together, explain to me right here and now, what's an emergency? A water line burst to a major building. Yeah, that's an emergency. Doing a building upgrade is not an emergency.
I'm glad we see some common sense here, uh, Ryan. I'm glad that you think like that because we need that type of thinking on the city council.
Yeah. And, and, and that's, that's the kind of thing I would want. I hope I put into play, you know, once I get an opportunity to serve up there because that's just nonsensical. And I don't think you're being a good fiduciary or a good official just throwing things through like that, you know? So what I would ask is, okay, if your department heads came to you and said, I need you to make a five hundred thousand dollar decision in the next day and a half, that's when you have the time to pull the trigger. You'd probably say, no, because we've not had any time to discuss this, look into it, know the merits of it. Absolutely not. You, you need to come with me and give me a lot of qualifying information for this decision. You're not just dropping on my desk and demand I decide that. Well, essentially that's what, you know, our city, you know, employees are doing your, your city council. And that's not fair. That's not right. And at least for me, I can't speak for, you know, what the rest of the eight people on the dais say. I'm not okay with that. And we're going to hit the brakes or I'm going to hit the brakes at least. And I'm hoping some other people will too because that's just kind of, you know, it, it's just saying, you know, well, I don't see any cars coming on the, the highway. So, you know, the speed limit is thirty-five to sixty. No one's out here. Right. Boom. Something moves in front of you. That's, that's kind of what we're doing and where it's just waiting for that something to move in front of us moment now.
It's kind of like what happens when you buy a, you, you have a build or buy a fire truck and then you build a maintenance shed and you realize it won't fit.
We've done that before.
Oh, yeah. But that's from those emergency orders or, or, or not proper decision, not planning out and the execution of those plans, you know, so. Uh,
That's a big
It, it, that's a big, yeah.
Well, it's not that you can't have the discussion to figure out why that might be needed, but I think you need to hit, hit the brakes long enough to say, okay, what's all the information going into play, why we're making this decision? Because right now they're talking about building a new justice center.
Right.
If you're going to tear the thing down and completely rehabilitate it, then why are we throwing money into something that is in good working condition? I'm not saying it's excellent. I'm not saying it can't be better. Obviously it can. But is it leaking? Are we, you know, do we have a major water leak going on to the building?
Right.
It, it, it. Those funds can be better spent for a lot of other resources than a water line.
You know, you're coming in at a tricky point as well with the state audit that's getting ready to kick off. I think they're briefing the city council on February twentieth. Uh, so you're going to come on board right in the midst of this state audit. Um, so that'll be interesting as well, uh, see how that plays out.
Yeah. I, I mean, I'm interested. I think, you know, there's definitely, there's always room for scrutiny. My biggest, I want to say concern, but I would, you know, city council cannot tell their city employees who to hire and who to fire. And let's be very clear who the city employees are of the city council. You have the public defender. You have the municipal judge. You have the city clerk. You have the city attorney and you have the city manager. Those are the only five employees city council members can direct. Now, I do think it's the job of the council to say, look, we have to evaluate, you know, how effective are you as, you know, in your position on, you know, how you manage the employees underneath you. You know, the public defender and the municipal judge, I don't think they have any employees underneath them. City clerk will have like one. But, you know, if, if the city employees cannot effectively manage the employees who are under them, that can be problematic because it's going to hurt the entire organization.
Absolutely.
And what I worry about that is, you know, we've had an audit done before and we were told some things could not be done this way. From my understanding, many of them were corrected. What I'm, what the only thing I would be most concerned about because a couple of things with this audit. We've had changes in city managers since then. On more than one occasion, you know, a lot of what was originally looked at happened under our city manager, Mark Ror, was then being managed by Interom if he had not been hired permanently at that point, city manager, Sam Anslum. And now we're under city manager, Nick Edwards. So I, I guarantee you part of it's going to be looked into, it's not going to be all under, you know, Mr. Edwards' purview. I get that. But if there were things that happened under these other previous city managers that were problematic in some department and that department head's been told, you cannot be doing this and here's why, and here's how you correct it. And it's still going on that way, then I've got a question about, okay, you're, you know, if you're responsible for this employee, what are you doing to make them accountable to fix these actions that we stop having the same problems? Is it, they don't have the resources to manage what's being told to them and what the expectations are? Is it just defiance that they refuse to do it as they should? Or is it, they don't understand how to do it that way? Cause we can coach them up. We can get them the resources, but if someone's just going to be up, you know, hey, no head in sand, I'm doing it my way. I don't care what the authorities say is supposed to be done. That, that's a problem.
Big problem.
So I think, you know, you have to look at what are the situations? How's their direct supervisor handling it? You know, and unfortunately for the city, you know, I can't say, well, you know, your public works department, your police department, your parks department, any of those departments, I can't say, well, you're, you're doing a bad job and they need to be fired because that would get me in trouble as councilman. But what I can do is, you know, whatever city employee is over that segment, you know, I gotta say, look, what are you doing on this? What's the metrics we're laying out? How, how are you going to fix this? Are we building the person up and getting ourselves out of this situation? Or are these redundant things that have, have been addressed before and have continued to happen? Because to me, that's more of a defiant issue than is anything else. And, and that, that would be the only thing that would scare me about the audit. You know, um, there's always going to be things they're going to get dinged on. Always. There, nobody's perfect. You know, when these things have happened, go look at the other audits that have happened of other cities. No one's getting a perfect score. Because an auditor doesn't come in like this to look at the ones who are running, you know, some China rainbows. We're going to have some.
It's gonna, we're gonna have mistakes, but you can't have repetitive mistakes.
And that's, you know, like I said, the one thing I'd be most concerned about. Do we have new mistakes or do we keep on having the same mistakes?
That's true. Well, Ryan, I know I've kept you on here about forty-five minutes. Is there anything that you'd like to put out before we bring this to a close?
You know, not, not a whole lot. I mean, you know, my reasons for running, like I said, is I, I want to make this a good community, you know, we all enjoy for everybody. I'm not just here to represent, you know, the single men in their forties, you know?
Right.
Here to represent all fifty thousand residents. I am, it's, it's not a monolith pillar of, you know, I'm here for this only. I have to stretch my everything out there to say, I've got to work with all segments of the community. You know, like I said, I, I might identify as a Republican and being, you know, conservative. Doesn't matter. We still have people who don't. And I'm not going to say, well, I'm not your councilman because you know what? I am, I am your councilman. And I, I will do my best, you know, as long as I see it's something that's reasonable and, you know, not against, you know, my core values and something that I feel that the majority of the citizens would revolt against, you know, absolutely I'll work with you. I don't care if, you know, you vote a different way than me. If you've got a problem with, you know, code enforcement in your neighborhood, talk to me and I'll then go talk to, you know, city leadership. Or I will help direct you to, hey, here's the best way to do this through the channels the city offers. And if it doesn't work, let me know. I mean, you've got to be a councilman for everybody. Um, but you know, my biggest concerns as a community moving forward is we need to have a very safe community. You have to properly fund your public safety and that's been a concern in a lot of ways, you know? We're not going to have a safe community if we, you know, have vagrants on the street. You mentioned the people, you know, adults, you know, stealing kids bikes. Just two weeks ago, I saw a gentleman right outside my doors. I got to my car, scooting two little bikes around. He goes to this yard filled with all sorts of junk. You can tell something's going on. And I tried to get an officer who I saw driving by. He was tied up on another call, unfortunately. You know, it just irritates me to see kids bikes stolen because you know what? It's happened to my nephew and it broke. We're not the worst. Terrible.
It's a business. It's a business. Cause my aunt, she lives over there by Ace Hardware on Maiden Lane. And back in there, they bring them in, they paint them, they, they'll switch parts off and on, and then they go back out and it's a business. Uh, and there, I mean, so there's a lot of things and we under, I understand our police are understaffed and, uh, but we've, we've got to be better as a community. That's where
We do.
We got to be proactive and we got to start getting involved. We can't rely on the police to fix everything. We have to We gotta be proactive and we gotta start getting involved. We can't rely on the police to fix everything. We have to get involved and communicate and then communicate with the police and let them know what's going on.
You know, I've seen Joplin grow sizably, you know, within my lifetime of being here. I mean, to think we have both a medical school and a dental school is unbelievable. We have a university that's been growing and they're growing more out there at Missouri Southern. I think it's fantastic. We need to do things where, you know, the parents who are sending these, uh, you know, college students here feel like they're in a safe community. And if they see, you know, someone living on a park bench, you know, in the business district, they're not gonna feel like their kid's safe here.
We, I don't know if you saw it, but this morning we just had a shooting, uh, an officer involved shooting over on Seventh and Sergeant, I think it was. And I think it was a vagrant. So.
Yeah. I, I'm still waiting to kind of see what's going on with that. Yeah.
I don't know all the details. I won't go that far, but that's what they've been saying. So we'll find out more on that.
And, and, you know, it's, I guarantee, I, I've known a lot of officers. I've never have known an officer who wants to go to work and say, I want to pull my gun and shoot someone today. That's not what the men and women do. That's the last thing they want to have happen. So, you know, it scares me when we have, you know, an emboldened criminal element feeling, you know, they can go after officers to the point of them getting that, to that point. Um, to where the officer has to engage them like that. That's, that's sad and that's scary. And, you know, if we tolerate crime in our community and our police don't feel like they can go out and make the arrest and, you know, have the charges filed by our prosecutor to see some accountability to these people who commit these crimes. And the crimes just get kicked out or, you know, pushed out. Well, these criminals become more smart and more emboldened and they're gonna argue with these officers. Say, you were wrong last time you got me on this.
You know, you know, Ryan, you're absolutely right about the prosecutor. That's, and back to transparency. I've tried to search for how many people go through by category, like whether it's, uh, you know, theft, uh, whatever it might be prostitution, drugs, selling drugs. Where can we go to get the, the data on that? This is how many people were arrested and this is what the, uh, the punishment was. Is it a slap on a wrist or they drop in the charges? Is there anywhere we could find that information? That you know of? If not, maybe that's something the city council you can talk to and get the prosecutor involved and making that data transparent.
I, I've, I kind of, I believe there is some of that information that's kept. I don't know in what capacity and I'd be interested to learn more about it, um, and how to access that.
I hear rumors all the time that the prosecutor is just a revolving door. People are brought in, five minutes later, they're released. They'll, they'll do the same crime over and over and over again. And so I don't know if it's rumor or misinformation. That's why we gotta have these type of facts. So we can look at and say, what's up, Mr. Prosecutor? Why has John Doe been through your, your, uh, your court twenty times in the last twelve months?
Oh, I mean, there was something I was reading in the news the other day about someone who's got like on their seventh DWI here in city limits of Joplin. I mean, that's insane.
It is insane.
You know, it's, it's one of these things that, uh, well, I know there have been Joplin officers who have even brought Supreme, Missouri Supreme Court ruling saying, hey, these things can be done like this. This is what the high court of Missouri says about, you know, uh, how we, how we, just as simple as conducting a Phil's sobriety test, that you shouldn't be doing it in the thirty degree weather when it's raining, you know, on a downward hill. You know, it's not, an officer trying to play a gotcha game. They're saying, no, we're not supposed to do it here. We need to go to, to the justice center and conduct that there. And from my understanding, prosecutor saying, oh no, I won't do that. You don't have a right to do that. And they've brought the Supreme Court ruling saying, yeah, we can. And I'm trying to do it the lawful, right way.
Right.
I don't know what that disconnect is there. I don't know if it is a, I, I don't know. I hate to speculate. Um, you know, I've conveyed some of my concerns to that person's, you know, direct supervisor who's a city council employee. And, you know, hopefully there's some looking into that, but you know, um,
Well, I think as a city council member, that might be something you can get consensus on as far as this pledge for transparency with crime data, with economic data, where the contracts, you know, to be able to look on a, most websites you can look on, and I could sa, search a database on who was awarded contracts with a simple punch in. Awarded, you know, the ones that are being like submitting an RFP. Our system of communication and to even try to find that data is so archaic. You have to literally go in and request that type of information.
Absolutely. So I, you know, I think there's gonna be some improvements. Um, from my understanding, or at least there's, there's some goals to make some improvements. Um, adding a communications department of some sort, but I'm just curious to see, you know, what the path is forward on that. So.
All right, Ryan. I know I've kept you a lot longer than I should have. I appreciate your time and dealing with this. And, uh, where can people, do you have like a city council Facebook page or something that?
Yeah, at this point, especially being unopposed, I hated to throw a bunch of money into this or ask people to, oh, let's, you know, create a cough for this, because it's just not necessary. But I've just made a very simple, you know, Ryan Jackson, Joplin City Council Facebook page, you should be able to find it. Just putting Ryan Jackson, Joplin City Council. Hopefully you find it. Um, you know, I would encourage people to connect with me on there. You know, it's no, no hard feelings. I just don't really connect with folks. I don't know on my personal social media, but that's what that page is for, you know, for everybody to be involved. And, you know, if, you know, as I move into this role, if people communicate something to me, I will do my best to try to respond. Um, I'm hoping it's not like that scene out of Bruce Almighty where he opens his inbox and he's got like, you know, a hundred thousand emails, you know, he says, reply all yes. You know, I, I, I'm not hoping for that scenario. Um, but I want to be as good as I can be about returning correspondence, trying to be timely, try to be responsive. Um, I'm not gonna say I'm gonna be perfect at every single one, but if I miss it, you know, hit me back.
Awesome. You know, I'm doing a weekly interview with District Thirty-two Senator Jill Carter, who's responsible for Joplin, Yosha and greater area here. And we started, I started doing that just so the constituents could hear from her directly instead of hearing this misinformation. So maybe we could look at doing a bi, you know, a couple of times a month or a monthly or something as, as time allows. And I don't know if there's a gag order placed on you by the city attorney or the mayor that says the city council members are no longer allowed to talk to anybody. Uh, I've, I've heard rumor of that. So, but anyway. Well, one, one thing I'd like to say, go ahead, go ahead.
I better see the city ordinance that tells me I can't talk to the community when I ask you questions.
Exactly. Especially your constituents, right? Um, we are on magalocally.com. This is where the video will be. So if you have any friends or anybody, you can direct them there. And then maybe next time we could do a live and people could come in and they could ask questions directly to you.
Yeah. Something like that'd be fun. So appreciate it.
Ryan, I appreciate your time today. Hey, good luck there at city council. We're, we're rooting for you.
All right. Thanks a lot, Donnie. Take care.